I just came at the end of a story, didn't I?
Where's Mr. Dean? On the dots.
I will call the special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:00 PM. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Pietzou. Alderman Shuniman will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and a serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire, here. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Dean. Alderman Cookson. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Siegel. Alderman Shuniman. Alderwoman Elise Gola. Alderman McGinnis. Alderman LeBrun. Alderman Moriarty. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Lopez. Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have 11 members present.
Also present are Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Communications, Alderman Wiltshire.
I move that communications be read by title only.
Motion is that communications be read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries.
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy, President, Board of Alderman, Relative Special Board of Alderman Meeting.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I move to accept and place on file.
Motion is to accept and place on file. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. This evening, we have a presentation from the consultants on the Phase Two feasibility study for the Performing Arts Center. As I understand it, we have three speakers. Is that correct? Alderwoman Elise Gola, could I prevail upon you to move to the other side to make three seats together? Come on down. Proceed.
Great, thank you, Mr. President, for the record. My name is Tim Cummings. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city. We're here this evening to close out a project that actually started before my arrival, where we engaged Duncan Webb to undertake a Phase One feasibility study. And that Phase One concluded in the summer, early fall of 2016. And then we started Phase Two, which is the report that you're about to hear this evening, that I will now turn it over to Duncan to go into more detail on.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, public, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and present the results of our work this evening. It's been a long and involved process. We've been in your community a number of times over the past year and a half to complete this work. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the people who are here and not here who were actively engaged in this project. We had public meetings, group meetings, town hall sessions, and collected a tremendous amount of very valuable information from your community that has informed our conclusions and recommendations. So this evening, I'm going to remind you all of what we, the work that we did back in the first phase of this, which was mostly in 2016, and then worked through the second round of work, which is a combination of business planning that I have undertaken with my firm, and physical planning, which has been done by Scott Aquilina and his firm Brunner-Cott. And we'll be sort of tag teaming through that presentation. So again, I am a management consultant to people who build, renovate, and operate performing arts facilities. I've been doing this work for 30 years, roaming around the country, working for cities and developers, art organizations, and educators, helping them think about buildings of various sizes and types. I started my practice in 1997. This, I believe, we just started Project 390. So we characterize our work as our job is to come into a community, speak truth to power, and then get out of the way. So this is our work to give you this advice, to help you move forward or whatever you decide to do, knowing that the advice that you've received is professional, comprehensive, and objective. So the idea of arts facilities in Nashua has been around for some time. And in fact, we worked on one of the previous studies to do this, which was 10 years ago. We were a subconsultant to an architect who was brought in to look at this. Since that last round of work, there's been a lot of development, cultural and economic and community development in Nashua. And there has been the sense on the part of leadership that new cultural facilities might have a catalytic effect on Nashua and the things you're trying to do for your community. So our job has been to establish whether or not such an idea is feasible. So the first part of our work was to assess this basic idea. What, if anything, should we do? Is there an audience for new facilities? Are there users? What's wrong or lacking with the facilities you've got? And then, most importantly, from a broader perspective, how do additional cultural facilities help you achieve your goals as a community around things like economic development or building cultural tourism, helping you recruit companies to locate here, enhancing the quality of life for your residents, all of those important broad issues that you're wrestling with as a community? So we did that work. We've reached positive conclusions. And now we're working on essentially putting the flesh on the bones of an idea, which we'll share with you this evening. So I'll just remind you of a few parts of that first round of work. The key issue right at the beginning is understanding what the market area is. To do so, we collected ticketing data from Court Street and a number of other groups in the community to get a sense of how far people are traveling to Nashua for their events. And as you can see here, we really, there's a high concentration within a 15-mile radius. Many more coming even from within that 40-mile radius. So because of the, of the sort of density of regional population and the quality of the work that's going on here, the market area is quite big, despite the fact that there are other metropolitan areas with larger cultural facilities in the same region. That market conclusions led us to a number of important conclusions. That Nashua itself, with its sort of population near 90,000, is slower growing, but still has interesting opportunities for new programming and opportunities for families, culturally specific program, and need for sort of price-sensitive programs, meaning that things that are, that can be affordable and accessible to a broad cross-section of the population. When we go out in the 15-mile and 40-mile radius, we see regions that are growing more rapidly, diversity in terms of families, millennials. Going out to the 40-mile radius, more, more families, higher levels of educational attainment, strong ethnic diversity. So it's interesting when we think of what's, what's appropriate locally versus regionally. It's a little bit different. So we would sort of recommend a general approach of a, sort of a segmented marketing strategy, thinking about serving different audiences in different areas. But overall, we conclude that the market has the size and the characteristics to support more activity. This is our look at facilities. And I'm sorry for those of you at the back. There's a lot of very small names there. Let me just note at this point, before I get too far along, there is a, there is a detailed report that summarizes all of the work we've done over the last year and a half that should be posted on the economic development website tonight, tomorrow. Right? So don't, don't, please rest assured that you'll have the opportunity to see all of the excruciating level of detail that went into this analysis. It's all in there. So I'm just sort of glossing over some things to give you a sense of the work that we did. So in any event, this is how we look at facilities. Horizontal axis looks at the capacity. The vertical axis is our judgment of quality. And what we see in this chart, which looks at both local and regional facilities, is some significant gaps at the low end, meaning down at sort of 100 to 150 seats, locally at the midsize, 300 seats, and, and just as importantly, up over 500 seats. So there are some real gaps in that current local and regional inventory. We also looked at meeting and event facilities because we recognize from communities, from conversations in the community, that there is also an interest and perhaps a demand for better meeting and special event facilities in downtown Nashua. We see most of the hotel facilities that support that now are not in the downtown itself, more on the northern and southern edges of town. We also looked at demand on the part of artists and arts organizations in the community. This is a chart that we did last year in the needs assessment that identified 20 different groups that were looking for spaces of different capacities. We did a similar exercise just two months ago. We held what we called the Scheduling Charette, where we had a number of arts organizations here with us. And we sort of imagined that new facilities would be open. We put blank calendars on the table. And we talked about how they would book facilities and what groups would pay to use facilities. And we encouraged them to help advise us on, on policy for these facilities that would make them meaningful to them. That helped to us sort of reaffirm demand for different size levels. So we did three calendars, one for a 600-seat hall, one for something down in the 300-seat range, and a smaller 150-seat multipurpose room. And we saw varying levels of demand for, for all of those spaces. We also stress the importance of partners for the utilization of facilities. The educational sector, given the educational institutions active in and around Nashua, local developers who are interested in, in projects that include an arts and cultural component, and the technology and business communities that are seen, that express to us interest in higher-quality meeting and event facilities. So the fourth issue then was connecting this project to the broader goals that you've set for the community. One of the projects, the studies that we looked at was your arts and cultural plan, published in 2015, that established a number of goals for the arts around identity, education, commerce, that this project, we feel, fits quite nicely into. So on the basis of that analysis, we reached conclusions about that the market is diverse, large enough, and has the characteristics to suggest an audience for facilities. We noted the gaps in the existing set of facilities. We saw that there is significant demand for performance facilities at different capacity ranges. And we came to believe that new arts facilities align with many of the goals that you've identified for your community moving forward. On that basis, we presented some ideas to the city in May of 2016, and then determined that the best course of action was to consider a couple of things. One, a larger venue capacity that could be for arts and events, that could serve a range of nonprofit groups, commercial promoters, and also serving as a downtown meeting and event location. We also recommended the development of small and affordable spaces, and we're wondering if Court Street might be part of that solution. And finally, we advocated for the idea of a downtown arts district, thinking of these pieces that we are recommending as anchors in that district. That then provided Scott and his firm with the information he needed to start doing his work in this second phase.
Thank you, Duncan. So what we did, starting in the fall of 2016, once the fundamentals were established about the marketing study, was to take on looking at sites in downtown Nashua that would lend themselves to the kind of development that was suggested by the report. In addition, since there wasn't any detailed brief about this facility, we had to develop a model program. And we developed a model program based on looking at precedents of other theaters and multipurpose event spaces that were of this size and of this character. And what we did was we developed a model program, and then we applied the program to specific sites to see whether there was a fit-to-function at any particular site. And then we tried to narrow down those sites moving forward. As we got started, we had certain aspirations that we wanted to bring, architectural and kind of programming aspirations that we were looking to achieve. And that would be just to be something that would be visible, something that would be highly accessible, and something that would be vibrant and really be an attraction for downtown Nashua. In terms of the venue itself, coming out of Duncan's report, we weren't looking to do a single-purpose formal theater. We were looking to models of event venues that could lend themselves to a lot of different uses. So this is actually the Woodman Center. It's in Rhode Island. It was just completed. It's one room, but it does three things really well. So you can see in the upper right, it's a theater, has a stage. But the seats can be retracted, and it can become an event center for a community event. It can also be a place where there could be a party, a wedding, et cetera. So we wanted, again, we were looking to create something that was multipurpose, that could do a number of things well. We looked throughout downtown Nashua to find a site that might be appropriate for this kind of development. And working with a bunch of your leaders, we narrowed it down to these five. And we, we put this particular selection criteria to these sites. So obviously, looking forward to what would make this successful. Access to parking, visibility on Main Street or to Main Street was the criteria for us. Proximity to retail. We know that whatever we build needs to feed off of your current retail and your restaurants, but also help them, feed them too. And then we needed an adequate footprint, because a theater of this size, and we were looking at 350 and the 600, and we were looking at the 150, but they have a certain footprint that's required. And they have shoulder space that they need. You need a lobby, you need restrooms, you need concessions. And then the back of house needs loading, storage, costume shop, dressing rooms. So we needed a certain footprint. And from our experience in designing performing arts, we have a feeling for what that footprint might be. So based on those criteria, we actually eliminated the Indian Bank Building, because it's a beautiful building. I think there could be a lot done with it. It doesn't have the footprint that's required to build the venue and the front and back of house that's required to support the activities. We narrowed, we eliminated Water Street because it didn't have any pedestrian connectivity to Main Street, whereas these other sites did. They really, all of them, fit our criteria more strongly. So Spring Street is obviously an open site. So we analyzed that site in terms of its capacity. We actually designed a kind of conceptual plan for it. That would be, obviously, be new construction. We looked at a building that might be around 32,000 square feet. We looked at Court Street, because it's, because it's existing and it's in a good location. It does have access to Main Street along the pedestrian alley that's been developed. And it has a lot of life in it. And we also found Main Street. And this is the corner of Pearl and Main. It's the former Alex Schuster Building. And I have to tell you, we were immediately excited about the possibilities there. And I'll tell you a little bit more detail about that as we move along. Court Street became, I think, came to us as something that really fit a particular need. And that's that 200 to 300-seat venue, and also fitting a need that would be for local community arts groups. They're currently using it very actively. It suits their needs quite well. And so I think that the vision is that Court Street would be something that the city would continue to maintain. The building has suffered from lack of investment over the years. And I think maybe it has a little bit of bad karma. But it has a lot of advantages, and it has a lot of possibilities. So that is not our primary focus right now in terms of performing arts development in Nashua. But we think that it merits some investment as a, something to sustain the local art community and the smaller, smaller companies.
Right. So let me just add a little bit to that. We, we are taking the position that Court Street should be improved as and when that is possible for you to consider. We think that that portion of the building, not all of it, can be restored for use by local theater groups. And we think in that lower Court Street component of the building, we can sort of have space for a theater, rehearsal space, and various support areas. Our suggestion is that this portion, lower Court Street, could essentially be operated as a co-op by a set of community-based arts organizations. Or potentially, either they can do it together, or maybe there's one group that's a more dominant user, but we then look to them to help other arts groups gain access. The city's financial goal for Court Street, to have those user groups pay a rent sufficient to cover basic operating costs. And then the idea is that the users provide some of the services that are required in and for the building, except for sort of the capital maintenance of the structure.
So from an architectural point of view, we would envision that the uses would be maintained, that the theater itself would be maintained where it is. We'd like to look for opportunities to make some improvements to the lobby. And I think our goal there would be to make it more accessible, more visible. Right now, it's, it's difficult to find the entry. You can't really find the entrance, which you're coming from Main Street. So I think there can be some strategic changes there to make it more inviting and, and more welcoming to people. We would see the lower level as being renovated to fit the, the needs of the particular users, so classrooms, offices. And there is a studio in the basement that could be reopened for rehearsals. So not a lot of major changes, just making it a healthy, comfortable environment and one that's useful to the people that would be using it. So the capacity here is about, to our reckoning, is about 250 seats in a tiered setting, kind of a more formal theater setting, with different types of events, that capacity changes. We don't have details about what the renovation scheme would be, but minimally 19,000 square feet. If you wanted to take on more of the overall facility, it might be more square footage. But what's needed really is some interior improvements, some exterior repairs to make it weather tight. And I think the, really, the fundamental investment is a new heating and ventilating system, which is beyond its, its expected life expectancy. It's, it's, it's served its purpose, and it's now beyond its normal lifespan. And so depending on, on what is required, the budget may be somewhere between $2.5 and $5 million.
So as a part of this exercise, I estimated, I got some current operating budget information for Court Street, and then made some assumptions about new activity and more efficient operations based on those physical improvements, like getting the HVAC cost down, for example. So when we did that, we believed that we can make the building self-sustaining with some support from the user groups and with a combination of monthly rentals and sort of daily rentals on the part of various users. So it's, the, the basic idea is it's sort of cheap and cheerful. It's, let's, let's make it, let's keep the cost for users down. Let's keep the services to a minimum and ask for their help in physically operating and sustaining the building after the renovation, such that it can have a long life as a, as an active supporting facility for organizations now in your community.
And if I may, Duncan, so I just wanted to take a moment and, and make sure that I disclaim that what was just discussed over the last few slides is above and beyond the scope. And it came about through discussions and collaboration with the working group and comments that have come from the community, where Duncan and Scott both felt the need to give some sort of solution or, or some sort of direction for the, for the Court Street Theater, despite the fact that it's not our preferred development site, recognizing that it is an asset for the community and, and we have an obligation to be stewards of that asset. So with that being said.
Thank you.
So we, we really focused on the former Alex Schuster Building, on Main and Pearl, as being a site with tremendous opportunity for the kind of activities that are described in, in the marketing plan. In terms of the criteria that we were using to select the site, access to parking, it does have access to parking. Incredible visibility on Main Street. It's on a corner. Proximity to retail, it's right there. We love that. And it has an adequate footprint. That, the, the, Alex Schuster is a 1960s building with a 10,000-square-foot, square footprint. Lot of capacity for developing it in different ways. And it has a building immediately behind it. I think it's about 1910 building. It's a residential building. But that also has a lot of capacity to take on smaller spaces like offices, bathrooms, staircases, that kind of thing. So it has a lot of legs. And I want to show you a little bit more about it. Again, it has this great presence on, on Main Street. It already has this nice canopy, glass facade along Main Street, presence at the corner. You turn the corner, and it already has an entrance, a secondary entrance on Pearl. And so the, the ability of developing a project that has more than one entrance on the street and becomes very welcoming and dynamic on the street front is, it's, it's all, it's all there waiting to take advantage of. The site itself, it's well-placed. It's within easy walking distance of the Garden Street parking garage. There's actually a landscaped pedestrian alley from the garage to what we would propose to be the entrance to the new theater on Pearl Street. There is a loading dock there also, to the back of the furniture store. And that's essential to theater operations. And there, obviously, the connection to what's happening on Main Street and the pedestrian access to Main Street is, is all very apparent. These are, these are broad concept plans. So we, as I said, we developed this model program of the different pieces that would probably be, be required to support the theater event space. And we applied them to the, to the existing building. And so what we're proposing here is that the front along Main Street, at the street level, would be maintained as retail, primarily maintained as retail, with very little change. That's leasable, and that could be income stream. The, the street level of the 1910 building, which has smaller spaces, tighter column spacing, could be the entrance to the theater area, where we could develop restrooms, concessions, ticketing, that kind of thing. You can see that we have indicated a restaurant or function space on the ground floor. That's that 150-seat multipurpose space that Duncan articulated in his plan. So upstairs, unless you come up the stairs, a new stairway, you come up the elevator, and that's where you find this new theater event space. It's overlooking Main Street. And we developed the support spaces around it. So what might, how might this be developed, and what might it look like? So here's just, first of all, the capacity. So a nice big square room. It's about 97 by, it's almost 100 by 80. So that's a nice big footprint, gives us a lot of different capacity. For a formal theater setting, maybe 500 seats. But again, different events would have different capacities. Here's, so here is a picture on the upper left of what it looks like today. And to the right is a precedent of a, of a commercial building in Brooklyn, New York that was recently renovated. What they did to that building is they basically raised the roof. We need, we would need to create higher ceilings on that second floor to be able to create a viable theater and event venue. You need the height to use lighting, to use scenery, these sort of things. So what they did, actually, it's called St. Anne's Warehouse, is they, they reframed the roof and they made it taller. And that's what it looks like on the outside. The inside, this would be, here's a view of the second floor of the, of the Alex Schuster before it closed. And again, we would be reframing the roof with some trusses, and we would give, open up the floor space for, to develop it any way we wanted to. And again, give ourselves the height that we need. You can see what you do with the height. You put in the lights, you put in the grid, everything to hang the scenery. So there's a precedent for what could be done. Downstairs, again, minimal changes, but it could be a very open, glassy lobby. Downstairs, again, minimal changes, but it could be a very open, glassy lobby, art center and/or retail. So little investment down there to, to kind of make that into something that would work. In all, about 30,000 square feet, it would be on two floors. There'd be interior and exterior renovation, we have to do some changes to the exterior to make it work as a theater and really, you know, have that curb appeal that we need, but it doesn't have to be substantial. In the end, it's a new theater, support facilities for that theater, a new entry lobby, that event space, as I showed you, on the ground floor, and then maintaining quite a bit of the retail on the street level as well. We developed these plans, we worked with a cost estimator, we worked with a local contractor as well, and we came up with a budget of about five and a half million dollars, all told, for developing this property, sorry, 15 and a half million, I'm sorry. 15 and a half million, it says it right there. And I'm recorded, right?
Yeah.
Great. So I'm, I'm supposed to kick in the extra 10, right? About 15 and a half million total project cost to develop this property to, for a new venue.
So with that physical plan developed, then we came back in and have written a business plan. And I'm trying to use the words, I'm calling, referring to it as an arts and events center, because I want to stress that sort of a functionality, that it isn't, I don't want us to think of it as purely a traditional performing arts venue, I want us to think of it as a functional, flexible place for a much broader range of programming, from traditional performing arts programs, to more contemporary entertainment, to a range of different meeting and event, because that's the thing that's going to make it very busy and make it sustainable on an ongoing basis. So to start the business plan, we've written some goals, which are about providing high-quality arts and entertainment for the community. We think it's important to support local businesses, government and citizens, with professional meeting and event facilities. We want to stress the importance of affordable access to good facilities for local arts organizations, contribute to the economic vitality of Nashua and the region. Each one of those separately is not such a big deal, it's doing them all together in such a way that you have a sustainable business model, which is driven more by earned income as opposed to contributed income. So we, we looked at various ways that the building could be operated, and our recommendation is that the city of Nashua should be both the owner and the operator of this venue. At the same time, there are two important groups that should be brought along, and this first is a private foundation to represent the interests of the private sector in fundraising for, and the ongoing interests of the private sector in the operation of the building. And secondly, a programmer, meaning a professional individual or a firm that is contracted to do some of the, the riskier part of these buildings, which is generally about booking arts and entertainment programs and taking the risk associated with that. And we've already had discussions with a couple of firms based in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, that have expressed interest in, in programming and perhaps even operating this venue. So we think this is a good direction to go, the city has the, the ability to recruit the skills and resources necessary, and your mandate to serve local residents is consistent with the goals that we've established. That foundation is very important, it's a way for you to bring private sector leaders to the project and get their support in getting this up and running. And the best thing about getting this outside programmer is that you can use a competitive bid process, an RFP process essentially, to recruit that sort of a programmer and partner. I won't go through this now, but in our written report, we've written extensively on operating policy. And this is, a lot of this came out of the, the charrettes and the meetings we had with local arts organizations, talking about how the building should be operated. So we've written about how access is managed, and who gets first dibs on, on dates, how to set rental rates and fees, the idea of having some resident users, meaning groups that get sort of preferred cost of access and sort of first crack at the calendar, the importance of ticketing systems and the analytics that come with them to help market the building and the events being held there, the crucial importance of food and beverage operations, not just for traditional concessions, but importantly for catering, support, and even daytime food and beverage operations, some kind of a cafe in the building. We believe that Nashua has the, the kind of community that can provide significant volunteer support, both in leading, being involved on boards and advisor groups, but also supporting the day-to-day operations. And finally, we've stressed the importance of green operations, being environmentally sensitive in the way that the building is operated, particularly given that we're starting with an adaptive reuse opportunity. We've set a staffing plan, you see those blue boxes are the full-time staff, yellow boxes, part-time, and the red are event staff. We put the city of Nashua at the top there, but the same chart and model works no matter who the operator of the building is. The most important part of our work in this round was developing a pro forma operating budget, which is suggesting how the building is sustained over a period of time. This is a live Excel-based model, and after tonight, we'll be handing this Excel spreadsheet over to you, so you can continue to play with it and fiddle with it, because it's the kind of thing where you can say, well, what if we increase the capacity by 100 seats? What does that do to the bottom line of the building? And so it'll be, hopefully, a helpful tool to you as you advance the project. The theory of these pro formas is that it's all about projecting activity. So if we can project how many times there'll be rentals at different price points, how many times there'll be presented events, meetings and weddings, we can get a pretty good handle on sales, and that then allows us to project expenses. We have developed this budget on the assumption that you want to hit the ground running, you will spend significant capital dollars, so the operating budget is based on the idea that the day you open, you're fully staffed, you've got a full set of programs ready to go. You have an option, which is to take a slower approach to getting the building going. So you can decide, if you want to be a little bit more cautious and conservative from the outset, you can have a smaller staff and basically gear up in a more incremental fashion over the first few years. So we have informed our budgets by looking at a lot of other buildings in the region, these are some examples of buildings in New Hampshire, Vermont, and Connecticut that we used as models to estimate operating performance here. We've estimated activity, as I said, the key step. So in our main theater, we're being very conservative, I think. We're estimating in that first year about 172 days of use with about 76 performances, and that grows to about almost 200 days of use by year five. So again, I think we're being very conservative with this, and we're leaving significant capacity for growth in that. The multipurpose space, we're also being very conservative around the level of utilization. But even with that, we see that in the first year, there are 25,000 people coming to performances, and that grows to almost 30,000 people by the fifth year. And that activity then leads to our estimates of rental, rental revenue for the building. This is a summary of the budget itself, so it shows that in the first year, earned revenue, rentals and ticket income and food and beverage, is about $700,000, and that grows to $850,000 by year five. The operating expenses go with that, start at about $900,000 in year one, and grow to a little over a million dollars by year five. So what that means is you, we're basically covering three-quarters of the operating budget with earned revenue from the beginning, and that percentage increases to 80% by that fifth year. What that leaves then is contributed income. And I know that some people will look at that and say, well, that means we're coming up short, so we've got to chip in some, some more money. The way I'd like you to think of it is, this building is delivering value to your community, value that warrants ongoing support. So we have estimated contributed income from individuals, corporations, a little bit from foundations, and a little bit from non-local government. And then we've also added a significant chunk of support from an endowment. And we are estimating an endowment of, of $4 million that is generating about 4% to sustain operations. That endowment we're proposing is the private sector role in the financial success of the building. We're looking to the public sector to provide bonding support for capital, and looking to the private sector to raise money from the outset to endow operations. An endowment is really the most certain way to have a successful building, because it's there, it's money that's protected, and can sustain this building way, long time out into the future. The last big piece of analysis was, we projected the economic impact of this building on the local, and really, we have to do the county economy. So we buy these multipliers from the Bureau of Economic Analysis in Washington, and those multipliers allow us to say, when a dollar is spent in Hillsborough County in a certain industry, it gets respent and respent and respent, and ultimately has a larger impact depending on the industry it's spent. So that allows us to project direct, indirect, and the induced impacts of both building the building and operating the building. Construction impact, so if there's $12 million spent on construction, that generates in Hillsborough County about $20 million of new sales. So for example, certain amount of money is spent on lumber in a Hillsborough County lumberyard, that lumberyard operator in turn spends that money on computers and stationery and so on, so that, then money gets respent. So that's the idea of sort of this, the multiplier effect. So that leads to new sales of 20 million, earnings of 6 million, and 112-person years of employment in the county as a result of this project. Then we have the impacts of operation, and again, my apologies for the small numbers, but the point is that every line item in the operating budget, excluding staff, we have applied the multiplier to. So there's a certain amount of money spent on utilities and on waste removal and on administrative services and building services. So we apply the multipliers in order to then show how 900,000 spent, not on personnel, leads to significant impacts beyond that. And the third type of impact, which is often the most important on these projects, is the impacts of audiences. So people coming to performances, we know from Americans for the Arts, we know how much they spend on retail and eating and transportation and staying over. And we're able to calculate then those expenditures and the total impacts related to those. The economists in the room will say, well, you've got to be very careful about economic impacts, because we can't count money that someone would already be spending in Hillsborough County, they're just bringing it to another part of Hillsborough County. So the only money we can really count here is the audiences coming from outside the county, and the audiences who would have otherwise gone outside the county. So those two components, which we estimated about 50%, I'm sorry, 50% of the total audience, allow us to project the impacts of audiences. And I'm, I'm going to go to this slide, because the numbers are almost readable. So if you combine those annual operating impacts with the impacts of audiences, what that says is that every year, the operation of this building drives $1.4 million in new sales, $300,000 in new earnings in the county, and it creates nine new jobs in addition to the jobs in the theater itself. So it's jobs associated with the economic activity that the theater drives. In addition to those quantitative impacts, there are some significant qualitative impacts associated with this project. We believe that this is a catalytic project for the redevelopment of downtown Nashua. The presence of this building there will drive commercial development, which will lead to other sort of gains in economic output, as well as those other issues like corporate recruitment and economic development. We believe that the project will attract companies, workers, and residents to downtown Nashua, and we see this as a key attraction within a district for tourism development in Nashua. Finally, we have estimated how you move forward from here. And if I'll just, there's three parallel tracks, one is related to fundraising, one is related to physical planning, and one is related to planning for operations. So let me do the physical planning first, which is the red little bars and squares there. That is saying that if you initiate the work of forming a building committee and thinking about getting a better, sort of more specific cost, hiring a design team, going through phases of construction, heading into construction in the latter part, earlier part of 2019, you're essentially in a position to open the building in the fourth quarter of 2020. So that is a not rushed, but fairly steady pace to get you through the opening of the building at the end of 2020. The purple squares are just a reminder that you can't just wait until the building is about to open, so to start thinking about operations. You've got to start setting policy, hiring staff, getting vendors involved, like ticketing and food and beverage, and there's a lot of work to do in order to be ready. And then the third track, the orange, is related to fundraising. So, and there's a couple of important elements. As Tim will outline in a minute, one of the first things is to, to come forward with a, a bonding request to fund the capital component of the project fairly soon. But then, equally important is the effort to form a capital campaign in order to take on the challenge of raising the endowment to sustain the building. And that occurs later in 2017, campaign consultant is hired, campaign is, they do their research, and then they initiate a campaign for the, in the middle part of 2018, so that enough of a chunk of the funding is placed, that you, as a community, is comfortable with proceeding with the issuing of bonds, because knowing that that endowment component is in place should give you the confidence that the bonds can be supported. And then also, as a final step, there's a, some work being done to get a naming gift, an additional sort of financial thing. I would note, the only other, the element of the financing that I have not included in the budget is I did not put the retail income associated with the ground floor in the budget yet, because I felt a little premature to do that. So that's another sort of arrow in your quiver, potentially available to help service the debt associated with the project. Tim?
Thank you, Duncan. So, Mr. President, the reason why we're here tonight is I wanted to make sure we had a very clear understanding and, in terms of the expectations and commitments that would be needed by both the city and the private sector to be able to move this project forward. And so the very elementary next steps we, we would have is we would need to, to have some upfront funding for what we term seed capital, which would be money to help us procure a campaign, a capital campaign consultant, help us do some elementary design and physical planning. That would ultimately help us move towards that endowment type of programming that we discussed, in that four-ish million-dollar range. Ultimately, the city needs to understand that they have to be comfortable with to achieve the type of programming that was outlined tonight, a 15.5 million-dollar bonding request, and the debt service should not be expected to be paid back. If you wanted to go in the direction of the preferred alternative building, which would be the recommendation of this group, you're looking at the Alex Schues Building, I just want to note that it is privately owned, we've had very positive conversations with the current owner, he's willing to enter into an option. We would need to have that conversation with him sooner rather than later, because he, because he obviously wouldn't want to hold up his, his private sector plans indefinitely. So we would know that we would need to put some sort of payment to him monthly that would get credited to the, to the final payment to him if we were to move forward with this project. And that, that, that's all been discussed in advance in, in some sort of understanding, so we would have a clear land acquisition cost in our pro forma. So those are the immediate issues. What I'm hoping to gain from, from you tonight, Mr. President, and to the body, is some direction and some, and, and some understanding as to what the city would like to do, so we can move this, move this conversation forward in terms of planning for the next steps, because as, as of this evening's presentation... as, as of this evening's presentation, we would be closing out this project without additional information from this body.
Questions, comments from the board? Alderman Segal?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have quite a few questions and comments. In particular, this 15 and a half million dollars, I assume that does not include the purchase of the building, is that correct?
It does.
It does. So you have an idea of what the building would cost?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. In the budget that I saw, there doesn't seem to be any element that deals with bond debt service. And that's important because we have 15 and a half million dollars that we're talking about bonding, and the implication would be that the city pays for it out of taxpayer money. But then there's this endowment fund, obviously a $4 million endowment fund can't carry the bond debt of a 15 and a half. I wish I could have an investment like that, but that's not going to happen. And you've, you've allocated that money elsewhere. So again, I just need some of those questions answered. And that's, oh, the staff expenses that you listed, you have them starting in year one, but in fact, your staff expenses happen well before year one because you're staffing in advance of having any revenue or opening. So that's, that's something that probably needs correction.
No, the, the staff is in their year minus one. They, they're hired the year before the building.
Okay, I just saw a year one spreadsheet, so that's fine. Those are just the question, the immediate questions that I had. Thank you.
During that pre-opening year, you see the pre-opening year there, the staff is about half of that staff, they're hired, some of them are the executive directors.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think, I think in that, year one is the first year anything happens, but it's not the first year there's revenue.
My apologies. That was kind of small. Okay, so the assumption with the bond debt though, is that the city incurs, the, the city pays the bond debt?
The reality of these buildings is they do not have the capacity to service debt beyond operations.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
All set.
Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, I may have missed it, but could you just explain, isn't that design covering handicap access and an elevator to the second floor?
Absolutely. It's required, required by code. So it's absolutely, absolutely included, yeah.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. This question probably goes more towards, for Tim, but looking at the operating budget that was presented here, it seems some of the items under contributed, excuse me, under contributed income seem generous, but even if they were to, to happen, my question is where would the other 25% come from to operate the theater every year? What part of the budget would it come from?
I'm, I'm sorry, Alderman Clemmons, I'm looking at the spreadsheet up here, and under contributed income, are you, when you say 25%, you're referring to which line?
Oh, right. I understand that. Right. So that, that percentage at the bottom, 75%?
Oh, I see.
It's the earned income piece covers three quarters of the budget, the contributed income piece covers the final quarter.
And that would?
Oh, I, I see, okay.
And that would essentially be a bulk of that, would essentially be the endowment paying the operational costs, so there wouldn't be an ongoing cost to the operational budget of the city in essence, is the theory.
So if I could continue, what, what is, what is non-local government mean? And what are some examples that would be eligible for Nashua?
Right. So there's a number, we're presuming state, federal, and regional grants effectively. There is a fundraiser on the staff, and their job is to pursue fundraising in order to sustain the building. So we set what I believe are very conservative targets for individuals, corporations, and foundations, as well as that regional government.
Do you have any specific examples of what other theaters in New Hampshire get from non-local governments?
Generally, generally, more than that. I would say if you looked at some of the facilities like Concord and Manchester, they raise a lot of money from, from government. You know, we, because the orientation here was, or our strategy here was, let's focus on local government providing the capital financing, and let's really look to the private sector to provide the balance or most of the rest of the support. But inevitably, there will be grant opportunities that will arise that a, that a development director will see and go, oh my gosh, here's the state's economic development office has a new grant for, you know, education programs or small business things or something that we can chase. So we think those are realistic targets.
Yep.
Alderman Segal?
Thank you, Mr. President. This might be a question for either the mayor or corporate counsel. Is, would this bond debt be under the cap or subject to cap or would be outside of the cap?
The debt service would be yearly encountered toward the limitation that the cap provides. The bond itself is not.
So, and is an estimate of that amount of money? Anybody?
For 15 million dollar bond?
Yeah.
A little over a million. 750,000 a year on principal and if it were even principal on three and a half percent, you know, 600,000.
That's a million dollars that we have to have with our existing spending cap.
Now, if you were to finance it with an even principal, with an even payment, so the principal at the beginning is lower, it, you know, it would reduce it to some degree, but you would not be, have a declining principal requirement as you went along.
Thank you.
It's also replacing the existing debt that's being paid off. So there is some offset in the way the budget changes from year to year. Alderman O'Brien was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, for our investment of 50 million dollars, what do you, what would you say is the life expectancy of this facility as compared to Court Street? You testified that Court Street is getting beyond right now its capacity and expectancy, and just looking at this new adventure, what would it be?
Well, basically, the, the kind of construction that would be incorporated into renovating that typically has a 25 to 30-year life expectancy, but what we're talking about there is mechanical systems. So what I talked about, you know, Court Street outliving its lifespan, it really has to do with the mechanical systems that were installed probably close to 40 years ago, and then certain areas of the roof and the masonry that just require some maintenance. So there's a lot of, let's just take Court Street, there's a lot of Court Street that was built in the 1880s, it's still very viable, and there's parts of it that were built in the 80s that are still very viable, it just needs an investment to renew some of those, some of those pieces. So I guess what I'm saying is that the building on Main Street would, would, would probably have to require some, some investment in its systems replacement within 20, 35 years, right?
Can I add a comment? So you see on the bottom of the budget here, there's a line called allocation to capital reserve. So you see every year of the bottom line improves a little bit with, contributed income basically stays flat, no increase, it's just a little bit of inflationary escalation. But every year, you get a little bit busier, your attendance gets a little bit higher, so the bottom line improves. So starting in year four, we're, we're grabbing money out and putting into a capital reserve in order to fund the capital replacements that are required over time, whether it's a carpet after five years or a roof after 25 years. So the intention is that the building, if that reserve is, you, sort of allocated and used properly, is that the building has a very significant lifespan.
All set, Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Dean?
That's wishful thinking, but we don't do that in this city. Our school district's a perfect example of that. We go in to replace HVAC systems and 15 to 20 million dollars later, we renovate the entire school. Unfortunately, it's, you know, I find your economic impact, your quantitative and qualitative interesting. We just spent about 80 million dollars on a roadway out here that was supposed to generate all this economic impact down in the mill yard and all these, all sorts of things are supposed to happen. And I believe that road's receiving maybe about 15% of the traffic that, it's, it's not doing much of anything. It's costing us, we bonded about 40 million dollars to build this roadway that really hasn't delivered any goods. Unless the economic development director wants to correct me on that, there's been little or no spur of economic growth down there, has there?
No, Alderman Dean, you are absolutely correct. I would just caution that the Parkway just opened, and these types of infrastructure improvements take time. I do believe that the mill yard will increase in value as well as there are other opportunities closer to Broad Street. But as of today, as of today, you're absolutely correct that we have, that the roadway is not used to the projection level or to capacity.
No, we're near.
Yep.
Let's be honest about it.
Yep.
But, I mean, it, it was years in the making though, it's not as though it's, all of a sudden that roadway popped up and people knew about it.
Yep.
Locking, but anyways, that's another issue, but when, when, I'm really leery of these economic impacts, although this is different. We're talking about business and industry and whatever that, you know, these incubators, I think that was the, was the key word that was used during, during the last election about all these incubators are going to be down there and things like that, but this is different. This draws a different crowd of people, it, you know, it has a different, different interest, but the, I'm just leery of these economic impacts, I think.
Good cause, and I, you know, it's not a, certainly not a guaranteed thing. The one suggestion I would make is that when it's, when you're able to do so, I would encourage individually or as a group that the council goes and visits some theaters in towns like this in the Northeast, whether that's in Portsmouth or Rutland or Keene or other communities where we've seen investments in cultural facilities drive significant economic development. So don't take my word for it, go and see how it's happened in other communities and learn from them what they did in order to achieve those impacts.
But you seem to be a believer because you've used the, we believe, we believe, you use that numerous times on numerous things, so.
Well, 30, 30 years and basically 400 projects around the country, I've, I've seen what these facilities can do to communities. In my experience, the key is, the mistake that some communities make is they put all their eggs in, let's fix up the old theater basket and hope that that in and of itself drives revitalization or economic development. The truth is that adding a venue like this needs to be thought of as one element of a larger plan, and your economic development team recognizes that. So this is an anchor in a larger plan, and I think if you approach it that way, you have a high probability of success.
The Court Street building that you mentioned, did you walk through that building and provide information out of the goodness of your heart, or did you charge the city some money for doing that, performing that evaluation?
Right. So Tim used the word, sort of, it was a word you used.
Beyond the scope?
It wasn't really beyond the scope because we, we looked at Court Street initially, could, could Court Street be the primary solution? We recognized that that was difficult, but in, in talking to lots of people in the community, we came to the conclusion that it is important, it is a community asset, and there is a relatively efficient way to sustain the life of that building that, that becomes one of the, sort of the pieces of the puzzle. So we have, we have identified it as the longer-term solution to be a good 300-seat plus or minus venue that's available and accessible to a set of community arts organizations as and when you're able to fund that upgrade.
The, are you familiar with the history behind that building? How the city acquired it and?
Yes. And we struggled with it when I was here 12 years ago, so.
That, that, the one thing about that building is the communication lines that run through the fire, to fire alarm, fire alarm used to be in the front of that building. That's an old hose tower out front. So that building will always be there because we'd have to borrow money to move all of that, and that would be an absolute nightmare, but the, that building is, I, I don't know when it was built, in the 60s maybe, it's just, it is not a functional building outside of the theater. I mean, when you look at the space in there, it's just, it, it's, it's, it's a white elephant, as we used to call it, but, you know, the other thing that we talked about that President McCarthy had mentioned was, you know, we'll, we'll be retiring debt, but we're also letting debt as well. I mean, we have a number of other, you know, competing projects that we're looking at, the paving project that we just approved, we have a building on Burke Street that we're looking at, the school projects, there's a number of projects that, that are coming through, but it'll be interesting to see what happens with this moving forward, but.
I did, thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to clarify, what I meant by my earlier comment was, and Duncan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Court Street business plan pro forma and Excel spreadsheet that was included was above what was originally anticipated to help explain how you could make the building solvent. So, so that's where I was going with, with, with that comment. Additionally, I, I just want to circle back to, to some comments that were made just a second ago to, to further illustrate the point that we're looking to help redevelop Main Street and help revitalize Main Street. And study upon study, and from an urban planning perspective, we, we know that Main Street as a corridor is changing from a retail district to more of a cultural and arts type of community-centric district. To develop an anchor, to be a critical component, to contribute to that type of economic activity will only help stabilize the, the neighborhood, and this would just be one piece of the puzzle or one ingredient, and we would need to continue on our other efforts as well, whether that's introducing more market rate housing into the downtown, whether that's introducing other types of uses. We need to continue to, to make these investments if we're going to want to enhance our, our community, and, and I think what you will hear is some of our smaller businesses, some of our merchants are looking for assistance in, in trying to help stabilize Main Street, and this is just one way of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just philosophically, I'm, I'm in favor of this type of project. I, I think it, it makes sense, but unfortunately, I see here, and I understand the constraints that we're under, and so we may be retiring some bond debt, and then we have to say, well, is that bond debt we're retiring, is it, is it under the cap or over the cap, and what's the timing, and now you're taking a big chunk of money, and we've got, already got this problem. So while strategically I say, okay, that's great, and it makes sense, it's, it's a powerful driver of development, and I, I've been talking to Director Cummings, and I think he has some very good ideas of overall strategy, but again, it's, it's, I just want to understand how, in the city of Nashua, given our financial constraints that we have and the mechanisms that do constrain us, how do we make that happen? And, and I just, I need that explained, and it can't be on, none of that is up here because that's very, very specific to Nashua, and I do appreciate the studies that you've done, it's very clear that you've been diligent, but somebody somehow has to explain to me how we get from here to there, given that we have a situation where we're looking at, you know, whether we can afford a fully-staffed police and fire department given our spending cap issues, and we're going to see that coming up in the budget. So now we're talking about a potentially million dollars, where does that come from? Where, what, I, I guess that's, that's my open question.
I think that's the discussion we're going to have to have after this meeting.
But not tonight.
Alderman Lopez?
I just want to say that, to Alderman Dean's point, when we do have large-scale development project without necessarily making the links necessary to make it a comprehensive plan, you have issues like a road that people are under utilizing that doesn't have a destination or attraction. My understanding of the Broad Street Parkway was it's supposed to reduce the traffic load on Main Street. on Main Street by diverting them into the...or giving the drivers another route out of the downtown area. But we also have to look at the connecting roads and basically rehabilitate how they work now that there's the presence of a new incoming and outgoing roadway. So when we come up with an isolated plan without actually integrating it into larger city priorities, it doesn't necessarily pay off. But I will also say, as somebody who grew up in Concord and watched how the Performing Arts Center is there, really, really, really revitalized their downtown, the impact that is being suggested here as likely, it's not really rocket science. It's been proven to be viable in a community similar and near in location to ours. So I think the concept of improving a Main Street Performing Arts Center with a corner on it is certainly a good one. Personally, I'm very much in favor of making sure that the existing theater is taken care of and that our smaller local groups, as they've been referred to, are getting the attention that they deserve. Because while it can be attractive to chase a larger, more exciting project, we also need to make sure that the artists that are emerging in our local communities are getting the support that they need. So while it's not the ideal, I was definitely appreciative of the work that was put into looking at that building, even though it is a little bit of a quagmire. I guess the real question I have is, looking at taking the Alex Building and not necessarily turning the whole thing into a theater, but turning it into that holistic building that has multiple support structures to it, I'm in favor of that. But earlier in the review process, we were talking about creating an arts district based on a smaller-scale investment, trying to cultivate the local artists and the downtown population with things like festivals and that kind of thing. And it seems like when Alex came onto the market, we revamped that plan entirely. So I don't think Alex is in the performing arts district that was identified. If I remember, it was closer to the river, over where Riverside...or Riverwalk is, where The Peddler's Daughter is, those venues. How would this create that arts district, or would it move it?
I'm sure the proposal for the district went from the Elm Street Junior High to Court Street when it was in the original recommendation.
As I remembered, at the Elm Street Junior High, it was actually considered a pseudopod, and it was explicitly stated in at least one meeting that it shouldn't try to extend all the way, it should be more concentrated. But I guess I could be corrected if I'm wrong.
Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first, we don't technically have a quote-unquote "arts district," first and foremost. One of the ways we could address that issue is we could look to do a zoning overlay and actually articulate that we want to encourage performing arts and other type of artists within a certain land use area in the city. I mean, if you were to just understand in a very broad perspective that we're talking about downtown redevelopment, however you may define that, and ultimately in that downtown area, you're going to need some critical assets to be able to achieve that goal. The example that was given is that you could use a performing arts center as one of the anchors, one of a couple anchors. And I would suggest we have a budgeting arts district coming together, you know, at the...from the river to...from the river radiating out, whether that's at Riverwalk or whether that's at Court Street Theater. We definitely have a strong component of differing artists and artist-type uses. Mr. President, if I may, one of the elements that I'm hoping to take away from this evening is a clear direction that there's an ambition by this body for me to put together a proposal that can be presented to you that will ultimately be a bonding request of fifteen-point-five million dollars, understanding that it would have to be accommodated by the city. You then, during that discussion, can do what I would very much expect you to do as you're obligated to, which is to make sure that this request kept a stable residential tax rate within your current financial picture. And so you saw your tax rate not increase dramatically. You'd want to make sure that this capital request, whatever dollar figure it may be, can be accommodated, and you can then compare it accurately against the other needs that may be coming before you. That is ultimately what I think would be a good next step. But to be able to do that, I just want to make sure that this body has an understanding that the debt service in particular would need to be covered by the city.
Alderman O'Brien was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Step back a bit, though. I see we're going to require the 1910 building. The first two floors are going to be used with the theater. The additional two, would that be like an office space or available to...and would it be an income generator to this particular project? Second of which, the first floor, street level, I see is going to include partially a restaurant and then also retail area. Would that not be an economic generator to this particular project? And if that is the case, I unfortunately missed, I did not see any numbers up there or the potential. I don't know how much we're getting per square foot of retail space downtown right now, but I'd like to know that number so we can forecast that as we look, as we deal with the bond issue.
So that's the exercise, is we have not included those numbers in the operating profile for the center, but those are numbers that need to be calculated and looked at very closely in order to respond to the bonding request.
If I may, it's not just that alternative revenue that you're pointing out. There's also tax credits that could potentially be available, and there's other alternative revenue sources that could help drive down the bonding request, but we wouldn't know that yet at this stage. But what I want to make sure this body is comfortable with is understanding that to achieve the type of program that was outlined tonight at a maximum, you're looking at fifteen-point-five million dollars.
Alderman Lopez, did you have a follow-up to...
Yeah, I was going to follow up and basically say that if...I understand the need for an anchor, but not necessarily the need for the biggest anchor in the area. If we planned with the intent of trying to raise the revenue for this so that we don't just bond it, the arts community clearly showed up, the public is clearly supportive of it. I would like to see a little more creativity in terms of who would be willing to participate in the fundraising. I think there's plenty of interest here, and just saying, well, let's put it on the credit card, I don't think enough work has been done on that.
I think that's part of the next step. I think what we've heard is an upper bound on what it would cost and what the worst-case financing by the city would be. I think it's up to us now to look at who can we reach out to, to talk about contributions, et cetera. Some of that has already started, and I think that'll proceed as the proposal goes forward.
Alderman Moriarty.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's certainly no secret that I'm a fan of the arts community. I've been a positive street art groupie for years now. I'm on the Board of Directors for Opera New Hampshire. I have only missed one Symphony New Hampshire event in five and a half years. I play bass, my son plays clarinet, my daughter's going to probably go to acting school. So...but you lost me as far as voting for a bond with that thirty-eight-and-a-half-million-dollar max out the credit card paving. You could have doubled, going from two million dollars a year to seven-and-a-half-million-dollar of paving, you could have doubled from two to four, and you gone for a smaller bond and gotten a free arts center. For thirty-eight-and-a-half-million-dollar of bonding, was it really that necessary to max a credit card that much? And now we're coming back and asking for another fifteen-and-a-half-million dollars. Alderman Siegel's talking about how are we going to pay for it, and Alderman Dean's talking about how are we going to pay for it. Had you proposed, given this presentation to us a month ago or a month and a half ago, and we might have been inclined to do it, then when it became time to talk about the road paving, we might have thought, well, maybe we'll back off on the road paving bond, we'll get both. But that's not the case. The economic impacts, I mean, we're quibbling over the accuracy, the economic impact. It's eighteen jobs. I mean, whatever, call it zero, call it eighteen, it doesn't really matter. It's not eight hundred, it's not a hundred and eighty. You know, it comes down to, do you really want it or not? This administration's good at finding ways to spend money, so I'm sure it'll happen.
Alderman Olscher.
I certainly understand the competing needs of the city, the budget, the spending cap, but when is it ever time to support the arts in this fashion here in the city? We have a community who is looking for and has been asking us for this for years. This is the furthest along we've come in this process, and I really think the time is never going to be right. We're always going to need to repair this, just like at home. And I understand that it's a lot of money. It's always a lot of money when we want to do something good in our community. And I think the time is now to give the arts a chance. We've not done this for too long. I look forward to the ongoing discussion.
Thank you. You know, I think Alderman Dean said it probably best earlier when he said, you know, that's a nice narrative as far as the, you know, maintaining the building and making sure we have capital expenditures to do that, because that's exactly the problem with the roads. That's why we had to bond fixing our roads. And as somebody who has served on the board previously and previously to this, two years and four years before that, you know, I...knowing that Alderman Dean is probably a conservative to me being a liberal, was very surprised when he supported the road paving bond. And his support of that led to my support of that. And the reason being was that because he's right, we have to maintain our roadways. But here's where it comes down...here's where I disagree with Alderman Moriarty. I don't see it as one versus the other. I see it as a holistic approach to our city. Cities are expensive to operate. They have lots of different competing interests within them, and they have a diversity of people that want a diversity of things. And it's incumbent upon the city council, or in this case, the Board of Alderman, to make sure that we listen to what those needs are and balance them out. Now, I'm no stranger to the streets in Nashua, as I'm sure everybody in here is. There's potholes like crazy. I was excited that, when they came the other day and filled in some of them in my neighborhood. We have to do a number of different things. One of them is taking care of our roads. The other one is taking care of our arts community. I don't see them as competing interests. I certainly would support this project. I think that it's worthwhile. I think that, you know, if it funds itself year after year, then that, what more could we really ask for? As far as what...I'd like to also respond to what Alderman Lopez said in regards to what the community can contribute. And part of the plan here is a four-million-dollar endowment that's to be raised by the private sector, by the community, so that the operational costs are such that, you know, the city doesn't have to contribute on an annual basis to the operating costs. So I think that there's going to be an awful lot of community involvement, and I think the city is getting a bargain at fifteen-and-a-half-million dollars. And I certainly think...and I will tell you, Director Cummings, I will, if no one else here will, but I'm sure they will, but I certainly will support legislation...
To put forth.
...to the bond so that we can have the discussion. And so if that's something you'd like to do, please tell Corporation Council, and you can put my name on it as a sponsor. Thank you.
Alderman Doherty.
Yes, a couple of things. One, I think we should have the next step, Director Cummings, and then I would like to see that so that we know more about where we're at. And the other thing I would ask through the president to the mayor, I think during the budget process we're going through right now, that we ought to have an update of the bonding and look at the bonding plan going forward and just see where we're at rather than speculate.
Alderman Siegel.
President, I just want to address Alderman Moriarty's claim that somehow if we had just reduced the amount of paving to like five million, we could have had this for free. I would agree with my colleague, except then we'd both be wrong. The problem is that the number was arrived at because that's what it takes to get our streets up to the point where they're not fading below a certain critical level, which is incredibly costly to repair. So yes, I suppose we could spend less. For that matter, let's make up any arbitrary number and fill in some other desirable item. But at that point, the streets decay, and we're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars eventually down the road. And that's why we made the decision collectively to do this. So I don't believe that there's that kind of clean trade-off. This is a very, very separate issue. And yes, the roads are expensive, this is expensive. And again, I would urge Director Cummings to come forward with a plan, but it really has to address the mechanics of, if you really think you want to do this, you have to explain to me how this actually works in our budget, given the way our budget works in Nashua. Please explain that to me. That's all I want, and then we can debate this.
Alderman Olscher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lots of good comments tonight, and I certainly enjoyed the presentation. I've got a couple of questions. I'd like to go back to some of the projections because if we're going to be talking about this further, I think the projections are going to be key. I'm taking a look at page thirty-six, which is the pro forma operating budget, and maybe you explained something here that I missed, but it talks about the main theater, number of performances, use days for the various years. I'm wondering how this volume compares to the volume that we presently have going on in Nashua with the symphony and with the various theaters. Is this taking all of those folks who do this level of performance activity now presently in the city and moving them to a new location? Or does this represent an expansion? And what percentage of expansion beyond what's already happening? For instance, how many tickets do we sell for the symphony in a year? And how many individual tickets do these things represent? How many individual people coming to the theater do these numbers represent?
Excellent question. So first of all, the venues that we're recommending, the new venue and then the investment in Court Street, don't really support the symphony's main series. So they have expressed some interest in coming into a smaller venue on an occasional basis, but this is not their new home. So the symphony is...we're not pulling them into this project. There are...Court Street is largely to manage to take care of the bulk of the local arts organizations that are there now, and hopefully the improvements to Court Street make it a little bit more usable. I would say both for the main theater and the multipurpose room, I would anticipate that at least a half of that, if not in the main theater, we're projecting about probably two-thirds of those performances and use days are incremental, meaning it's additional sort of touring programs, additional rental activity that doesn't occur, like the same groups doing different things or more of what they're currently doing. And the meeting and event business, which maybe we're taking a little bit of that out of hotels, but I think it's more incremental activity because we're providing a new, high-quality downtown location. So a good chunk of that activity, both in the main theater and the multipurpose room, is incremental.
If I may, Mr. President, thank you. So approximately two-thirds incremental. We have to grow, we have to dramatically increase the volume of arts activity in the city presently, which brings me to the overall economic development plan. You know, the whole theory behind kind of raising entire area economically requires a lot of things happening, maybe simultaneously. Will the theater bring the people in, or do we need to have the people here first that will want to go to the theater? Or do we need to have the people here first that will want to go to the theater? These are the kinds of things that I wonder about, just like the road. You know, we have the road, but that was supposed to bring the people in. The people aren't here yet, going to the Mill Yard. These things happen kind of together. We're talking about the potential of a $15.5 million bond, and this is, as Director Cummings said, one part of the overall economic development strategy. I'm wondering, you mentioned, Director Cummings, if I may, getting more market rate housing, that kind of thing. What else would the city need to do as part of an economic development plan that could require a bond of this size? Is this the largest thing that we would be funding? Or is this the first thing that we should fund? Are there other things that might do more for us in a shorter term than an art center that would require this kind of bond? What are the competing requirements for a bond for economic development?
Mr. President, if I may. At this level, this would be your largest and also really only your publicly-driven type of investment. Most of it will be setting the stage for a private sector investment. Obviously, that could be pushed one way or the other with some incentives and whatnot. But ultimately, making sure that we articulate our rules and regulations in a place that will, in a way that will spur positive economic investments, such as the Brady Sullivan Project. A Brady Sullivan Project where they took, you know, essentially an empty building and they're rehabbing it into, you know, 200 market rate units is being done by the private sector, which is a great ingredient to the downtown. This would be one of the ways that the city could play a role in helping add an ingredient to the downtown to help not just the artists of our community, but the main street merchants and the small businesses along the corridor that are also looking for that revitalization.
Thank you. This will be my last question on this round, if I may. When we look at the other cities where an art center has been done, and we've seen the development, you have Ridgefield, Connecticut, and Stowe, Vermont, those kinds of places. How did the art center fit into the timing of the overall economic growth? Was it one of the first things that was done that began to raise these communities? Or was there something happening already? Did this come in sort of the middle or at the end of a surge of economic development? I want to just get a sense of where we ought to do it in our economic development plan.
Great question. And that comes back to the chicken and egg issue again. So there are some communities where the arts go into a place first. And the old line we use is that artists are the stormtroopers of gentrification. And all over the country, you see examples of artists who are just looking for cheap space, bringing their energy and vitality to undeveloped or, you know, challenging neighborhoods. And they, all by themselves, drive that economic development, which ultimately leads to gentrification, which ultimately pushes them out of that neighborhood. So in larger, in communities that are thinking about projects like this, what matters is, what has to come first is the intention to make it happen. And then you look at your tools as an economic developer. What are the various ways that we can drive economic development in this particular area? There are some communities that do it with the theater first. What I've said before and I'll continue to say is you need to do it with the theater as part of a set of projects that happen, if not concurrently, that happen in close succession. What really matters in a performance space and what really brings people is programming. It's not the building. It's what goes on in the building. So your ability to have a place that can be an excellent venue for local arts organizations to perform, that attracts people, or to have touring artists and entertainers that attract people, that's really the key catalytic event. Because once those people are seen on the sidewalk and active and the lights are on, that's the thing that encourages entrepreneurs, whether it's restaurateurs or retailers. Then what happens is these other efforts work on the barriers. They work on things that, because what we've discovered is it really matters with the arts is taking down the barriers. So it's about things like addressing people's concerns about parking and about safety and will there be someone, somewhere to go afterwards to eat? And that then drives participation a little bit further, and it starts this virtuous cycle where more people, more activity, other things develop, and ultimately it becomes a destination, which then is a part of this idea of a district. Because if you want to attract tourists and visitors to Nashua, it's very hard to do that just with a theater or one anchor. You have to give them a series of things to do and experience in Nashua. Hence, our stressing this. And I would say that in virtually half of the projects we're working on, and you know, we're hard to look at a building, and as much as we'd like to help you with other things, we're hard to look at a building. So we say, here's a building that makes sense, but please think about this building as an anchor in a district because that's the thing that's really going to put it over the top.
Yeah, just real quick. I know this is not on a scale of the Palace Theater in Manchester, but in the last few months recently, because of my granddaughter's stage presence, I've been up there probably more often than I wanted to be. And I will tell you that they were double booked a lot of times. The practices, the rehearsals, the performances, they seem to be doing phenomenal. Can you just explain, are they a similar type of setup with an endowment? And I do know a lot of, they have plaques on the walls about people, local residents, that have donated monies to the theater. But they seem to be doing really well. I know they're bigger. I'm not sure how much bigger, but is there any relationship in what you're proposing to the way that Palace Theater operates?
The scale is different, but the impacts are the same. Mr. President? The impacts are the same.
You perceive the impacts are the same as Palace Theater in Nashua?
In terms of direction. You know, it does the same good things in a small theater, in a small community, as it does in a bigger theater in a larger community.
Just one thing that I might add, just from an architectural point of view, is bigger is not necessarily better. Because the Palace Theater has its own challenges, like a theater in downtown Boston has challenges. If they have 750 seats or 800 seats, they have to basically fill those seats in order to make it viable. And so their whole pro forma is just different. So they have to succeed at doing something different. So it's not necessarily that they have, they have their own challenges because of their size. So a smaller, more nimble theater at sort of, you know, 500 seats can succeed in ways that the Palace Theater couldn't because they don't have the same operational challenges. Just different.
I really don't like hearing artists be called stormtroopers. I think when artists are bringing vibrancy to a community, they're just authentically expressing themselves. And usually, the gentrification starts when somebody gets an agent, and then suddenly, people are noticing the local vibrancy and trying to capitalize on it. I think what we have here in Nashua is a lot of very strong local groups and a lot of local talent, which is why earlier I was trying to reinvigorate the idea of the art district. Because I think this is a scenario where the artistic community of Nashua is where many hands make light work. A lot of different organizations are doing what they can to contribute positively into a larger ecosystem. And I think that is a strength that we should not ignore. I think as Alderman, we clearly have to take a close look when someone suggests a project that's going to cost us $15 million, and it's our responsibility to vet it. But I also think this conversation should really be a conversation of not if, but how. How do we get to the point where we can get an anchor, the full anchor that we're looking for here at Alex? And what pieces do we have in place right now that we might be able to enhance to bring more money into the scene, to bring more tourism, more interest? I think this Saturday's New Muse Festival is a huge example of how we can create destination interest, get people using those roads. And by the way, I, again, I think we did exactly the right thing with repairing the roads. There's a Lake Tenarnia that is located on Kehoe and Marshall Street. Whenever you have a road that starts to degrade and it starts to collapse, it costs more to fix it. So yes, we had to spend money, and that was really not even just a luxury. It was more, we let it get too far. I think our art scene, as Alderman Wiltshire pointed out, is starting to face the same risk. We can't continue to turn down opportunities like this. We do have to get forward motion on this. This project particularly has taken a couple of years of discussion. We have invigorated the passion and the spark of interest in the artistic community. We can't teach them that it's not going to succeed. We have to figure out how to do this. I just want to make sure that we're doing our full diligence as we do that.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, or to first thank Duncan and his team for doing this project. If we think back a couple of years ago where we were and what we were thinking about, the fact that you've brought professionalism and experience to this has given us far, far more insight into what we should consider and how it might be a success. And I think without your efforts and input, we would be, you know, way, 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 way behind where we are now. I also want to thank the owner of Alex, John Kootzos, for holding his building open while we're, holding his building stable while we're at least looking at this project. Tim Cummings for helping to advance it. I'd like to thank all the people who've come out tonight and our other presentations. There's been a lot of citizen interest, and all of the people here and who've contributed in other ways have really helped us formulate ideas regarding how we should proceed here. And just a more mundane cost. We haven't yet talked about the new market tax credits, which might be available and have been used in other civic projects around New Hampshire. These can, there's no guarantee, but they can be potentially obtained and reduce the cost of the project, the overall cost by, of the capital cost by, and Director Cummings can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the range of 25% to 30%. So on a $15 million project, you know, $4 million or something like that. But, and back to the beginning, I mean, I think Duncan and his team have enabled us to consider an exciting project, a project that could take place at an exciting location. And I think I and others really appreciate everything that you've helped us accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, what I'm looking for tonight is a motion or some sort of direction that you'd like me to come back before you with a financing plan in relatively short order because the opportunity to explore the Alex Shoe building is slipping. And if we want to advance this conversation, we need to work diligently and sharpening our pencil to understand that we would need to develop that financing plan, which could take in some alternative funding sources, like tax credits, could anticipate other revenue streams, could anticipate disposing of other city assets that might help us bridge the gap. There are many ways we can arrive at the $15.5 million figure. I would like that opportunity to bring that before you and so you can have a good, honest, robust discussion comparing it to your other capital needs. But also, in addition to that, understanding that we would need to also appropriate some money in short order to help also advance the conversation, whether it's a capital campaign consultant, whether it's helping do some design work. But ultimately, to understand that, and also understanding that we would have to put an option on the Alex Shoes building for a certain time period. So I would like to come back before you in relatively short order and present this plan and help you advance this conversation.
And I think that's the direction I want to take. It's no secret that I have supported doing a performing arts center for some years now. We started this with my resolution a couple of years ago on the parking garage rooftops, if you recall, which led to the Spring Street proposal, which led to getting a contract with Duncan so that we could actually understand the need, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we're at a point where we actually have, I mean, this is one of the most solid economic forecasts I've seen in a long time on this board. You know, I understand we have skepticism about what was said about the Broad Street Parkway, but there's a lot of reasons for that. I mean, that project was one thing and became another. And I think you also see that it's having an effect with things like Brady Sullivan, et cetera, but they take a lot of time. Real estate deals do not pop up overnight. Zoning doesn't change. And assessed values don't go up as quickly as we might like. I think we see evidence that some of that is happening. And I think there's much, there's good evidence here that this will have a tremendous effect. So I will be happy to work with you on trying to find answers to some of the questions that got asked here tonight. I think Alderman Siegel brought up a lot of points that are things we need to fit. What we have is, we have a template that says it's possible. We need a template that says it's optimal by doing some more work. So unless anybody on the board wants to make a motion to the contrary, I think we'll give a recommendation to Director Cummings that he pursue getting a concrete proposal before us that we can look at. And that in the course of the budget, we review the bond schedule again so we understand what our debt tolerance is over the coming years. Is there anything else?
Wasn't one of the suggestions to form a committee for the building planning? Is that something they have to do?
For what?
I thought one of the recommendations was to form a committee regarding the building.
Yes, there's three committees that we've recommended when you're ready to do that. One related to find funding, one related to the physical planning, and one related to operations.
And I think we'll figure out how to structure that in the proposal that comes forward. Alderman Dean?
Wouldn't this fall under the Committee on Infrastructure? The former Committee of Land and Buildings? Once a building is, I mean, I take it, the deal here is we're going to use Alex Shoe. Is that, am I right?
Well, that's the proposal. I mean, we will need to have a, the infrastructure committee is not appropriate to manage that on a day-to-day basis. We are going to need something to deal with the programming and the operation of the center, if it's going to work. Alderman Moriarty?
Short question for Director Cummings, just to check it off the list. As far as sort of in reference to what Alderman Shoneman was saying, sort of what is $15.5 million by you? Is there any chance in the future you might be giving us a presentation on the cost of a commuter rail station? Have you done any work of any sort towards that endeavor?
Mr. President, through you to the board, I've been diligently working on trying to develop a way to bring passenger rail up into Nashua and then further north to Manchester. Is there any proposal to come before you in any short order? The answer to that is no. There's a lot of work ahead. Would I be looking to possibly fund a short, an appropriation to help bring in some consultants, to help fine-tune that plan, to bring professional staff in as consultants, such as like Duncan, to help the city move forward? You could, that would probably be the only type of proposal that would be coming before you, but nothing in terms of this order of magnitude at all.
Thank you.
Before I ask for a motion, for those of you in the audience who would like to get opinions to us, I would suggest you send them through the web either to our legislative assistant or to me, and I'll collect them up and make sure that we get everything out to the whole board. I would ask for comments, but there are a lot of people here, and it's getting late already. So we will undoubtedly have additional meetings where there'll be more opportunity for public input. Alderman Wiltshire?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we're adjourned at 8:49.